Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation, Mr. Aronah? Can you lead us, sir?
Our head. Dear Lord, we come to your presence to ask for your guidance, direction as we conduct this city business. We thank you for all your blessings and we ask for your guidance as we make decisions for the betterment of this city. Please comfort the Alanis family as they go through this difficult time of the lawsuit of San Juan. Mr. Alanis, may he rest in peace. His name, mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Back from pleasure, Mr.? Pleasure, Mr.? Back. And your public? For what you're saying. For liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor, my name is May. At this time, I want to take a listen, 30 seconds of a moment of silence for my running mate, Eduardo Alanis, that passed away the day before yesterday at his house. Unfortunately, he had a good heart battle on cancer that he had. Please, let's have a moment of silence at this time. I guess this question for Mr. Willingham in regards to the parks and director. I know you have two teams or maybe three, I don't know, eight U and a 12 U team that are moving on.
Correct.
And as far as I know, every year we always discuss, you know, the funding purpose and stuff like that to help out these teams. Are we, where are we at with that?
We're good right now with that. Our eight-year-olds are going to the World Series in Youngsville, Louisiana. They'll be leaving next week. As well, our 12 U will be playing in the championships, vying for a berth in the World Series the following week. And our 12-year-olds will be going to Deer Park right outside of Houston, trying to make it to the World Series, which would be in Laredo, Texas, the week after. So also, we have our, we're sending 39 kids to the games of Texas. We've got 20 competing in track and field. We've got 16 competing in swimming and three competing in tennis. So they'll also be leaving next week on Wednesday. So yeah, we have a bunch of kids going out to represent San Juan next week.
So a lot of your staff as well?
Yes, we have a lot of us will be traveling with these teams just to make sure they're taken care of and.
So, Mr. Aronah, I guess on that note right there, I guess for, I know we've been discussing on that north side part how we wanted to do that little groundbreaking. Maybe we need to shoot for maybe sometime the last week of July would be okay?
Yes.
The reason why I say that because I would like for his staff and his department to be present, you know, during this special event. So if we can shoot the last week of this month, okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Now, we, a lot of those kids will be back and we want some of them as well. Yes, we want their present in uniform and stuff like that just to. So yeah, it'd be real good for them.
Okay, good.
Like always, this is another having so many kids in San Juan any time and every time that there's kids going out. World Series, the championship, it's just, it's amazing what the city of San Juan is doing. So we're providing services to our kids, to the children, to the community. So good job for that.
Questions? Any other? We're good, okay, thank you.
The public hearings, the first one that we have is hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance for a resoning request from a single-family residence district to multi-family resident district of lots four through six block one, Paradise Parks subdivision, as requested by Hector Bowie.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue with that, can we take no action on this item? As I'd like to discuss further with Mr. Bowie as far as the requirements that are set within our city ordinances. And I'd like to discuss a little bit further with them. I think we're a little bit rushing into it.
Are they way off or what?
The square foot for multi-family is 150 by 150. And currently, they're residential lots and they, there would be 100 by 150 for three lots. Yes, sir.
So you want more time to individual?
If we can, you know, if we may.
Okay, at this time, we'll take no action, sir. No problem on this one. Mr. Danny?
Next item, Mayor Commissioners, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance for a resoning request from single-family residence district to general business district of the property legally described as lot 16 through 18, block four small number two subdivision, as requested by Yolanda de la Cruz, presenta LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Aronah. Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is proposing to rezone three residential lots into commercial properties located at the southwest corner of Raul Longoria and Alta Street. A commercial plaza is located to the north of the property and a trucking company to the east. Each of these lots measures 70 by 100 except for the corner lot of 60 by 100. It gives it a total of 20,000 square feet, which does meet the square footage requirement for commercial uses. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission. We did mail 24 notices to property owners within a 200-foot radius. Staffs recommending approval. We did receive a few calls, two calls against. They stated parking noise and alcohol. This is, but what we're looking at right now is just the rezoning request. This is a public hearing. Staff is recommending approval and so did the planning commission. This is a public hearing, Mayor.
This time, I'm going to go ahead and open this up at 6:09 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions? Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Steve. State your name for the record.
Marcelo Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
I'm here for. Well, we, we want to make this a lot from residential commercial to, for the purpose of a food park to bring to the city of San Juan. Any, any questions I could answer for you at this moment?
So you're for?
Yes.
And your name again, sir?
Marcelo Gonzalez.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone here for or against?
I'm assisting Marcelo and his mother, Yolanda de la Cruz, on this project. They've spent a lot of time researching, really valleywide and across Mexico and other parts of the country to bring something really, really nice to the city of San Juan. So there's a lot of careful thought in both the design and in the delivery at the end. So we have that, I guess it'll be the next item here.
You're in favor of the rezoning?
Absolutely.
You are related to them or?
No, I am going to be assisting them to build the project.
Perfect. And your name is Mr. Ruben Garza?
Ruben Garza, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone for or against? No, we're on beam.
On litter beam.
Yes, okay. Anyone else? Any questions for Mr. De Hanyan, members of the commission? No? Okay, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and close this at 6:11 PM. Is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you.
I think you bought the house from Familia Lopez? Yeah, we saw that, we saw that they were sold already. Yeah.
Thank you.
The next item, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow the spot food truck park and sale of alcoholic beverages, wine and beer for on-premise consumption at 103 Alta Street, legally described as lot 16 through 18, block four, small number two subdivision, located at the southwest corner of Alta Street and Raul Longoria Road, as requested by Yolanda de la Cruz, presenta LLC.
Mayor, this is Mayor Commissioners, for the opportunity. This is also related to the same property, same applicant. However, considering two conditional use permits in one. One is for to permit the food truck park and the second is for the sale of alcohol for on-premise consumption. So the applicant is proposing to open a food truck park at the southwest corner of Alta and Raul Longoria and the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. They're proposing 10 food trucks, a green area, parking area along, within the property and in the area as well. Restrooms available for customers. And if we can, Ruben and Marcelo, you all can hold that, please, over here so that the Mayor Commission can see it. The list of requirements that, that the planning commission and the planning staff are recommending for approval are that it cannot be located in a residentially zoned area. So we had the rezoning approved. And also, the stand must be inspected, each stand by the inspections in health and fire. They must have paved off-street parking available over and above what is required for the business to which it is adjacent to. And it is, if it is a portable building or trailer, it must be anchored to the ground. They also have to meet the setback requirements of the zoning district. Water and sewer disposable facilities must be available and they must obtain health permits and also obtain a text dot permit regarding access along Raul Longoria. Of courses, along with compliance with TABC on the alcohol. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission. We did send out 24 notices to property owners within a 200-foot radius. As I stated earlier, two people were against because of parking noise and the alcohol. We recommend approval of both the conditional use permit for the food truck park and also the CUP for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages there. This is a public hearing and I don't know if we want to get a little bit closer so they could see a bigger rendering and you want to explain a little bit? I don't know, Mayor.
Let me, let me open this up. This time, I'm going to go ahead and open this up at 6:14 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Southside.
This is Southside.
Southside, not going to be north side. That's out there, we'll get you. Is there going to be a perimeter fence in here or somewhere?
There's going to be a fence here and the city has proposed giving us half the alley because they're going to have to worry about the alley.
Right.
Give us eight feet that we need to extend this for parking here on this side.
Yeah, I'll have her come up to the podium. I have someone that's going to come to the podium. So I'll check it out right now once she's done. Ashley.
And I live it. And which is very close to where they want to do the food trucks. What I oppose is the sale of the alcoholic beverages because it's, I'm not going to feel safe in my house. I don't want that type of environment so close to where I live. It, it makes me feel unsafe. I mean, they can sell all the food that they want, but alcoholic beer and wine, that's going to create a totally different environment. And I want to be able to feel safe in my house. Anyway, you already have six places where you sell alcoholic beverages. Steve's Liquor, Memes Drive-Thru, Walgreens, Stripe, CVS and Junior's. Why would you want to issue one more? You know, I just don't feel safe.
Ashley?
That's it, you know, there are several churches close to the, to that location. Are you within the law to issue permits close to the church? I mean, how would you all like it if they're doing this in, close to your house? You wouldn't like it. I mean, I want to feel safe and enjoy quiet, you know? I don't want the place, my neighborhood, you know, filled with people that are getting drunk and driving drunk. I just want to prevent something from happening. I want to feel safe. You know, I mean, it's up to you. I hope you make the correct decision, you know? I don't want later something happens and I'm going to blame the city. I don't want that. You know, since you already have six places that sell alcohol and they're fairly close to my house, this will be the seventh.
Have you had any issues as far as any alcohol?
Yeah, they've thrown bottles at my, in my property and there's a lot of traffic. There's always a lot of traffic already.
So when you say they've thrown bottles to your property?
Empty bottle of beer.
Did you, have you ever filed any reports with our PD?
No, I just put it in the trash.
Okay.
But my main concern is my safety.
Okay. When anything like that happens, you need to file a report?
I will from now on. I just want to enjoy my, my house.
I totally understand.
My quiet, you know?
Okay.
I hope you make the right decision.
All right.
I just want to state that as other locations, the drive-throughs and stores, those are just for off-premise consumption. They purchase the alcohol and take it with them. And also, you're considering a conditional use permit. So we're setting conditions and at any time, if there's anything that, that we don't like, we can bring it back so you can revoke the conditional use permit. So just wanted to add that for, for the lady and everyone and for, you know, so to, to note that, that it's a conditional.
Does she understand that though? Did you discuss that with her?
I, I haven't met with her. I didn't know she was here for this matter.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. But I could speak to her.
And whatever happens today, she is here and it would be wise for us to notify her.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
What does a conditional mean?
Yes, sir.
I have an idea. We're going to play a big room.
Yes, sir.
And just, I guess the question I have in regards to this is that, you know, the cameras, locations, are they?
Yes, they, they have to comply with cameras.
Is it on the recommendation here?
Yes, sir, it's in the report as far as complying with the cameras requirements that we have in place, so.
And the times for the alcohol sales?
The alcohol sales, I'm not sure as far as it'll be pursuant to TABC. And also, I don't think they're, normally these food truck parks are during the evening hours, you know, when the, and in the weekends. It's, they're not typically open during the day.
Well, if you have a liquor.
Yes, sir.
You know, I know that you're, you're able to open till two. If you just have strictly just alcohol, like a beer license, you're only limited to 12 o'clock or 1:00 in the morning.
We can add as a condition to, to the approval.
I don't know if you're going to, you have to go back and revisit this item to make sure that what exactly the times are going to be or, you know, because.
Well, I can.
I'm assuming that's, I don't know, but that may play a factor whether we approve it or not.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying?
If you'd like, we can take it back to planning commission. We can do that, Mayor, or we can, you know, definitely rely on, set the conditional.
I just want to go ahead and this table this and bring it back and find out exactly on our next packet. Make sure you state, you put there the actual days and the hours that they're planning to. Yeah, but it's not on our, yeah.
By any chance, anybody, you're going to have any, like, at least a security, you know, towards either?
Yes, yes, we're going to have.
We're going to have a security here.
We're going to have security. We're not planning on selling any bottles, any glass.
So bloods, cameras, you're also going to, well, it's recommended by the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to have plenty of cameras. We're not going to sell any, any bottles. Everything we serve is going to be plastic, no glass because it is, it is going to be, it is family oriented. Like the hard liquor we do sell is going to be more than anything for the ladies, margaritas, daiquiris, that type of thing.
Yeah, but, but what I'm asking is the hours as far as for the alcohol, selling of the alcohol.
We're looking at midnight.
Midnight?
Midnight. We don't, we don't want to stay up until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning selling, selling alcohol either because we've spoken about this in our team and we want this to be a family-friendly environment as, as much as we can. That's what we want to do it. We don't want to make it into some type of nightclub. We don't want to have any, any disorganized people. We don't have, we don't want to have, you know, people rolling up in their cars and playing their loud music. It's going to be organized and family-oriented.
Come over here, Mr. De Hanyan, please. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and table.
You have a motion, Mayor?
There's a motion to table the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This item, at this time, is tabled.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow La Condesa Event Center, located 111 West Nolana Avenue, Suites 5 through 7, legally described as lot two, Circle K, number 9123 subdivision, requested by Jose Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Mr. Santos is applying for a conditional use permit to open an event center at a commercial plaza located in front of Delia Estamares along Nolana Avenue. There's 12 suites there. There's some restaurants, child daycare and some offices. There's 66 common parking spaces. It's an event center, no alcohol will be sold. And as far as, we did mail notices to properties, property owners within a seven, to seven property owners within a 200-foot radius and we didn't receive any comments in favor or against. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission and we are recommending approval based on the conditions listed in page two of the report, which are there. If you need for me to go over them, Mayor, and also, so the other conditional use permits we're going to see are based on the same conditions of approval. This is a public hearing, Mayor. This matters now before you.
This time, I'm going to open this up 6:25 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions, members of the commission? Mr. De Hanyan? No? I'll go ahead and close this at 6:25 PM. Is there a motion approved? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow suite events at 2003 North Veterans Boulevard Suites 1 and 2, legally described as lot one, Portiones Center, as requested by Andrea Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Aronah, Mayor and Commissioners. Ms. Andrea Ramirez is applying for a use permit to open an event center and this is a children's event center, no alcohol. She's going to have balloons and some other items that we discussed at the planning commission hearing. The plaza is located at the southeast corner of Veterans Boulevard and Sioux Road. It has six suites in total with a restaurant, a beauty salon and some offices. The suite is approximately 2,000 square feet, two entrance and exits along Veterans Boulevard as well. We did mail 18 notices to property owners within a 200-foot radius. We didn't have any comments in favor or against. Staff is recommending approval subject to compliance with list of conditions in the attached report and they are the same conditions as the previous CUP that you just saw, Mayor. And like I said, this is for Children's Event Center. Ms. Ramirez is here. This is a public hearing.
This time, I'm going to open this up at 6:26 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Buenas tardes.
My name is Andrea Ramirez and I came to see if I could give you permission to open my event center. I don't have it in San Juan.
Your name again, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, I'm Andrea Ramirez. Yes, it's for, for children.
Event, okay. Anyone else for or against? Any questions, remember? No? I'll close this at 6:27 PM. Is there a motion to approve? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Gracias.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow the La Mancha Event Center at 502 North Veterans Boulevard Suite F, legally described as west 183 feet and north 162 feet of lot two, night subdivision, as requested by Juan Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Aronah, Mayor and Commissioners. Mr. Sanchez is taking over an existing event center called the Hall Event Center that was open in 2020 and he's proposing a different name. So he's having to go through the conditional use process. The event center is located at the northeast corner of Veterans Boulevard and Chaparral Avenue. It has an entrance on both streets. The suite is 1,440 square feet and a total of 80 common parking spaces. Fire department occupancy load is noted in your report. Off-street parking requirements are being met. And we did mail 10 notices to property owners within a 200-foot radius. We didn't receive any comments in favor or against. No alcohol will be sold at this location. Staff and the planning commission are recommending approval subject to the same list of requirements as the other conditional use permits we just seen. This is a public hearing, Mayor. This matters now before you.
This time, I'm going to open it up at 6:29 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Want to start, sir?
Sanchez, y este, como bien ya explicaba, este, estamos tratando de cambiarle el nombre al Salón de Ventos en lugar de que se llama, dijo, Event Center. Ahora queremos ponerle de la mancha Event Center. Si, nomás, pues venimos para que, si nos pueden aprobar eso.
What event will you have?
All the 15 years.
Ah, okay.
No vamos a vender alcohol ni nada.
Ah, sure.
Nothing else, it's for, for pure fiestas.
All right. Any questions? No, we're good. I'm going to close this at 6:29 PM. Is there a motion to approve? I'll second, second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance for a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, wine and beer for off-premise consumption at Cabrera's Meat Market located 2211 South Veterans Boulevard, Suite 3, legally described as lot 3, hacienda Palmas subdivision, as requested by Ricardo Cabrera.
Thank you, Mr. Aronah, Commissioners. Mr. Cabrera already owns this meat market. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission and he stated that several of his customers when they're buying meat and different things have requested to be able to purchase beer to go. And so he's requesting this conditional use permit for the sale of off-premise consumption alcohol. So the, there's a list of requirements. So the, there's a list of requirements that he must comply with, I think he's meeting most of them because he's already has a meat market. So as far as, we did mail 13 notices to property owners within a 200-foot radius, we didn't receive any comments in favor or against, there was nobody at the public hearing before the planning commission in favor or against. The planning commission and staff are recommending approval of this conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, this matters not before you, Mayor.
It's up at 6:31 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? Passa, sir.
Buenas tardes. Bueno, vengo a pedir, ya que es meat market y a veces el cliente pide, si no vendo licor, cerveza, y para eso quiero pedir permiso para poder vender cerveza.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I'll close this up at 6:31 PM. Is there a motion to approve? I'll move. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, hold a second and final hearing for the voluntary annexation petition, the giant subdivision being a three-acre tract of land out of lot 6, block 27, Alamo Land and Shure Company subdivision, as per map recording, valid in one pages 24 through 26, map record, City of County Texas, located approximately a quarter of a mile west, outside Chavez Road along the north side of Hall Acres Road, is requested by Jose Luisa Blandez.
City Commissioners, in, a request on March 24, 2020, when the city commission approved Resolution 2022-15, accepting a petition for voluntary annexation and setting dates and times for public hearings. So we are doing this in accordance to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 43, Municipal Annexations, Section 43.028 and the city charter. We are recommending approval to hold second and final public hearing for voluntary annexation petition. This matters not before you, Mayor, it's just to hold this.
It's just for approval, though. All right, any questions? That being said, is there a motion to approve? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Yeah? Say nothing? Sorry.
He wants to stay there all meeting long. The next item under appointments, consider removing appointment of board members related to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This, Brenda Escalante.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. This item is before you, as just for the record, there's a typo for the member that's up for appointment or reappointment would be Aaron Gonzalez. And before you, you'll find the attendance form, the member log and five applications.
He reapplied, right?
Yes.
Mr., well, he's been consistent with you guys and doing very well, right?
Yes.
With that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to reappoint Mr. Aaron Gonzalez. It's been seconded by Coach Neto. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Mayor.
The next item under discussion, possible action, we have preliminary and final plan approval of the Meadows and Ridge Block 1 subdivision being 8.65 acre tract of land out of lot 12, block 31, Alamo Land and Shure Company subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile west of Chavez Road, along the south side of Ridge Road, is requested by Quintanilla Hill and Associates, Mr. De Hina.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This, this, this plan was approved by the city commission on February 2021. At that time, the developer was proposing a 33.93 acre subdivision. Half of the subdivision was for residential use and the other half for multifamily use. Now they are proposing to complete only the 8.65 acres, the multifamily areas, which are a total of 29 lots. The proposed subdivision is located in a flood zone B, which is areas of minimal flooding and it has an internal street with an entrance and exit along Ridge Road. Water and sewer services will be provided by the city of San Juan. Hydrants will be spaced according to the fire department every 500 feet and the waterline shall be looped to an eight-inch waterline as per city of San Juan requirements. Staff is recommending approval of this section to be completed at this time. This matters not before you, Mayor.
Questions for Mr. De Hina? So it's your recommendation as well, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, is there a motion to approve? I'll second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion carries, thank you.
The next item, variance request to subdivision orders of the proposed plantation height subdivision, being a 21.68 acre tract of land out of lot 1, block 14, John Clouseau subdivision, located approximately a quarter of a mile south of Hall Acres Road, along the east side of Veterans Boulevard, is requested by Quintanilla Hill and Associates.
Perona, Mayor, City Commissioners, this subdivision was processed by the planning zoning commission on February 3 of 2022 this year and by the city commission on February 8, 2022. At that time, the project engineer did not request any variances. It is noted that the project engineer is requesting the following variances, number one, to not comply with a six-foot side setback, they're proposing five.
I have a question on item number two, you know, it's more than, than half of the setback they were cutting there.
Yes, sir.
That's the only issue I have as far as lot size.
Yes, sir, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, and in this case, the, the 10-foot variance, normally it's 20% of the lot debt, so instead of 20 feet, it would be 10 feet and it wouldn't be on the easement or anything, you know, it would, it would, it's fine, but if you would like to make a motion otherwise, that's okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
On, on those there, because of, they wanna 10 feet back because there's no alley in that, in that subdivision site.
Yes, sir.
Typically, we usually a 20-foot setback when there's a, some sort of an easement like Mr. De Hina, but in this case, there's no easement, so there's no need to, you know?
So we're good?
Right. We're good with that.
Last question. So it's like they're inheriting the out?
Right.
Pretty much, right?
Just kinda giving up the alley.
All right. All right. With that being said, is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item, Mayor Commission, we have consent agenda, we have a couple of items, a couple of minutes, the ones for the month of May 31st and also for January 25th.
At this time, is there anything we need to modify or amend under consent agenda? Modify or amend? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next item under executive session, the San Juan City Commission will convene executive session according with the Texas Open Minutes Act, Vernon's Texas statutes and full annotated government code, Chapter 551 and 551.071, consultation with attorney. Tonight, we have pursuant to Section 551.087, economic development negotiations and 551.071, again consultation with attorney, deliberation regarding the economic development incentives agreements between the city of San Juan and Olive Garden Holding LLC.
This time, is there a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be entering executive session at 6:40 PM. Thank you.